I'd like to call the July 13, 2021, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that parking validation and bus passes are available for any members of the public who utilize the County Parking Deck or public transit to attend the meeting this evening. You can get those, your tickets validated from one of the officers who is with us this evening. It's valid for today only. Let me read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today?
If I may, Brownie, just in the interest of transparency, this is just a disclosure regarding the East Fork Pottery Economic Development item we'll be discussing. The nonprofit that I'm the executive director for has a longstanding relationship with East Fork as a community partner. There is no conflict of interest. We've ran a check through legal, but just in the interest of transparency, did want to share that ahead of the discussion.
Okay. And the legal review concluded that there was no conflict of interest in this case?
That's correct. There's no ownership interest in the venture by a mission or entity, and there's no consideration, no benefit, no risk.
Thank you very much. Thanks for disclosing that, but since there is no conflict of interest, Commissioner Beach Farrar will vote as required on that, on that, on that issue. All right. There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting tonight. We come to the consent agenda. There is one item we need to move from the consent agenda to new business, which is the budget amendment for Asheville High School new classroom replacement building. It's a new construction project. It was reviewed by the School Capital Committee this week, and there's really, it's almost more of a change in the language of how it's being described. There's no substantive change to it, but we'll discuss the difference when we get to it, but we're going to move that into new business. Are there any questions about any other items under consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda but for the Asheville High School classroom building as discussed?
Motion. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, we now come to public comment, and we've got two folks who have signed up, Don Yelton and Jim Fulton. Thank you for being with us. Mr. Yelton, would you like to go first? And you've got three minutes to speak to the Board. You'll get an orange light when you've got 30 seconds left, and a red light when the time's up, and please conclude your remarks when the time's up. We want to give everyone an equal amount of time to address the Board. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I know the procedure. Missing, getting out of cycle, Brownie, you forgot to have your moment of silence, by the way, and that brings up a part out, something I wanted to talk about, because I've been doing this for about 25 years, and I have seen Jewish preachers, I've seen Episcopalian preachers, I've seen Baptist preachers, I've seen Catholic priests up here having the prayer. So there was no favors to anyone, and I do miss that, because that was the first time I got exposed to see a Jewish leader leading prayer. So I think there's some benefit to that. You might want to consider it. Of course, you don't like to hear what I've got to say. I know you don't, and I know that coming in, but I'm going to say something that's very, very serious. You hear a lot of different things when you get out of here. The people in the street don't want to come up here and feel like that they're wasting their time, but I do believe that there is hope, because the hope lies in this. You folks have to make decisions on where you're going to spend your money, and everybody wants everything. They want this, they want that, they want the other, they want affordable housing. You all need, as our leaders, make a list of what all people want when you go out in these community meetings, and put a dollar sign on them and say, okay, are you willing to pay for it? Because the problem that we have is you, as commissioners, are running for reelection at some time, so you try to please everybody. So you take a pile and you throw a little bit here, and a little bit there, 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 and you don't do none of it good and completed. You need to make a value chart, and I hope in this study that you're going to be doing, you do that and rate things, because you know, as far as taxes is concerned, every time you have a tax increase, which you will have this year, you can say whatever you want to say it's going to be. What does that do to affordable housing? That wipes it out. So then you've got to try to scratch your head and figure out how to do something about affordable housing. Then you've got to take money from people that's got it and do affordable housing. So you see, it's a never-ending cycle, never-ending cycle. I think you need to consider a Homestead Act. Now, you're going to tell me that the state won't let you do that because of the Machinery Act. Well, guess what, Brownie? We, the Republicans, hold the legislature, so if we can get a few Democrats to go along with us, we can pass a Homestead Act right now, and when you get to be 62, freeze your taxes on the house you're living in. A little place in Texas does that, and that would help you keep affordable housing, and I think you need to consider that rather than trying to build affordable housing, because you can't build it nowadays with the price of lumber, thanks to what's going on. Great time.
All right, thank you. Mr. Fulton, come on up.
Well, he had me at no taxes after age 62, so I vote for you, Don. I just feel as though I have a responsibility to come here and to remind you that I don't, and many people don't, agree with proclamation that, that the country, the county, the city are systemically racist, and all of the things that you're building upon that. So I'm in the minority here. I also wanted to say that I saw the, the agenda item about approval of AB Tech Workforce Training Center, and I'm just wondering, is there a budget for that, that 411,000 is being tracked to, and will I find that in the budget package that Avro put out? I don't know, but it would be good to have somewhere to track that. I also wanted to say that with the, with the huge amount of money being given to the county by the taxpayers, the federal taxpayers, I really think it's very important that we see full transparency on precisely how much money is coming in and precisely what it's being spent on. That's, that's very important. I still think of Wanda Green, and $52 million is an awful lot of money, and it can make somebody, it can make somebody do something they might not otherwise do. So I just wanted to say that, and I thought, I thought the, I thought the East Fork Pottery item on the agenda was a good idea. I thought it was odd, but I thought, I thought that, I thought that the idea behind it was a good one. I also wanted to ask if there's a budget for the, for the product, I'm sorry, for the development and production of a comprehensive plan for Buncombe County, if there was a budget for that, and if so, how does, how does the cost of the consulting firm factor into that? And I also wanted to mention that if you find, which I expect you will, that there is no conservative voice on that steering committee, that I offer myself to be considered for a member of that steering committee, and that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fulton. And if you would send me an email with those questions, I'd be sure to make sure you get answers to each of those questions about the budgets that you inquired about. There are, so we'd be happy to get that to you. It's very sensitive. Okay, thank you both. Thank you all for taking time to come speak to the Board this evening. Appreciate it. All right.
Chairman Newman. I think we have one other person that came in late that wanted to address the Board.
Sure, who's that? Do we have another person? Yes, please come on up. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Roy Harris, and I've been living in Buncombe County more than half of my life, and I didn't realize until the other day when I got to counting up. I've lived here longer than I've lived anywhere. I think that you all are doing a great job. I could have some relief on my property taxes, but we'll work on that, but just thank you for the, what you're doing and how you do it, and the professionalism that you carried out. I have a, my home county doesn't run that smoothly, and so just thank you all the way you're carrying out business. One of the other things, I live in, on the south side of Asheville, and we're being gentrified like you wouldn't believe it, and in fact, I told someone the other day, if I sold my house, the thing for me to do is go to the end of the street and wave goodbye, because I couldn't afford to move back into my neighborhood or even live in the neighborhood, and so that is happening all around me. I know to some it's good and to some it's a whole different story and everything, so whatever you can do for, someone even called me the other day and said, you're a legacy resident. I was like, a legacy resident? And so I will proudly carry that title with me, that I'm a legacy resident, and so thank you for what you do, and the ones of us that are legacy residents, look out for us, because we want to stay here as long as we can, and we're willing to work with you in any way that we can, and so it's been a while since I've been here, and the layout is a little different, not as many people, but I like what I see and like who I see, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being with us and for your comments. We will be considering an item on the agenda this evening that, that we hope speaks to some of those concerns. All right. Commissioners, under Presentations, our next item is a presentation on the county health insurance policies, and Sharon Burke, our HR Director, is going to present the item. Thanks for being here, Sharon.
Good evening, Commissioners. Today, we will be presenting the health insurance information for you, and just so that you know, with us, I have Larry Reese. He's a Senior Vice President from USI, and with him is Roberta Ferdinand. She's our executive for our plan that assists us, and then Laura Callaway, she is our benefits administrator. So I wanted to make sure that you're aware and, and who really is doing a lot of the work behind the scenes. Larry will be doing the presentation in just a quick second, but I did also want to let you know that, starting next week, we will be having informational meetings with our staff on what we're proposing to you all today. Larry?
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you again, Sharon, and good evening to everyone. Thank you for, for the chance to be here. I'm Larry Reese with USI. We're your employee benefit consulting firm. I understand, I'm trying to keep this to about 20 minutes, so I've got about 15 slides to go through. I'll try to keep a pace that'll allow us to do that, but it's important that I answer your questions to the best of my ability. If not, I'll make notes and we'll, we'll follow up accordingly. With that, I'll just jump right in. Is it going to let you do that? Hope we didn't just turn it off. I apologize if we did.
This happens a lot, don't feel.
Thank you for saying that.
Let's go, yep. There we go. So I think everybody on council has a printed copy of the material, and I'll just quickly go through the agendas before I can take off page. Big, big topic today. We're going to run through the State of the Union on the self-funded health insurance, so medical and pharmacy, and how that's been performing. We'll take a quick State of the Union look. MSK is muscular skeletal, PT is physical therapy. I think this group knows about that. Those programs have been remarkably successful. We'll take a minute and dive in on that, speak to some favorability on those programs. Then we have a benchmark comparative study for you at a very high level, but it speaks to the benefit plan design. And then we'll look at a two-year strategy, migration of that plan design, and the draft alignment based on the survey data and the market research. Then a completely separate topic, related in the sense that it's still about the medical program, but more the managing of care and what's going on with the clinic, how the health risk assessments you, all the employees go through, and spouses go through a health risk assessment, what does that data suggest and what might next steps be? And then aligning incentives, so trying to encourage people to take some steps on the health journey, and what those incentives are today, and where we might take them, and why we might go there, and then some next-level programs that we think are appropriate in managing cost. Maybe as a backdrop to the whole conversation, I would just suggest to you that 1% of the people spend about 5% of the money, and so the, to the degree we can really help that 1%, it can have an impact as a self-funded plan sponsor on your experience, so I'll just offer that as a backdrop to some of the things I'm going to share today. Roberta, if you'll go to, great. So financial performance, how are things going? Plan year '20 was favorable, actual costs, so net medical costs, prescription drug costs, reinsurance or stop-loss premiums, and administrative fees were down 11% in '20 compared to the same data for '19. So that's favorable, and that's about a $3.5 million favorability. So let's talk about this year. Physical year, July through May, so 11 months into the physical year. We had a budget forecast, so our forecast, our underwriting projections turn into your budget, and essentially, that's $30 million to $26, so you've got another little over $3.6 million in favorability, again, about 11 to 12%. So things are running good. However, little bump in the road, and I've, I've got some red font here, just to call out, when you see blue font, that's my suggestion, things are favorable. Red font, my suggestion, things are not favorable. For the three months, I'm sharing that because this is being recorded, I'm told, and be shared, yep, community-wide, so I thought that might be a helpful hint on consuming the information. Three months, year-to-date, most recent three months, excuse me, March through May, are not favorable, they're flat, so just something to keep our eye on. Three months doesn't a year make, but not favorable at the moment. Good news, physical year '21, '22, everybody in the room knows, there was no recommended increase to budget, and we also recommended no increase to employee payroll deductions beginning 1-1-22, so calendar year '22. And we had previously, I previously have been in front of this governing body, and we had talked about some plan design changes a few years ago. I'm back again to resurrect that discussion and reconvene on what that might look like. So that's pretty much your financial update. So just comparatively now, not against your own budget, or not against your year-over-year performance, but you to somebody else. How is Buncombe County's historical performance compared to a benchmark in the southern U.S. for municipal clients? And your consumption is going to be something on the magnitude of 16 versus a 13.5 if we look out at '21. That black line's around 13.5 or a little north of that. So conversationally, you're running about 15% to 17% unfavorable to a southern norm. Lots of reasons for that, we'll cover some of them. We've made some improvement. When I look at this, I see some nice, you know, you don't like 18 over 17, 19 appears more favorable than the trend that 18 occurred, and then we made some great strats in '20. Can't say that that's all due to the population health and other strategies that we've deployed. We also get a little lucky with not as many shock claims. It's a combination of both, but you need to be doing both, and the journey right now with '20 is things are moving back in the wrong direction. So if you're looking at this like a salary analysis, because basically you spend money on healthcare, it's a dollar that would be spent somewhere else, this is a little unfavorable in that respect, and it's consistently been that way. I suppose that'd be the point of this one. Next, I'll just now move us into your three plans. You have three medical plans today, and you see the percentage of enrollment, so there's good spread there. 52% of the people elect the standard plan, and then the buy-up is 24 and the core is 24. So we gave you two benchmarks to look at. We could probably try it out five more, but these are statistically valid benchmarks. I'll call your attention, because the conversation's going to hone in on changing or considering a change to deductible and out-of-pocket. These are singles, so just to keep the grid a little less complicated, I get there's a lot on here, but family is not presented. There'd be commensurate moves in family, but what you have today is a $300 deductible, so individual is single, 406.50, and then you see the out-of-pockets, and you see it in comparison to benchmark. So all three plans are favorable. That might be one of the primary reasons why your claim cost on a per capita basis are higher than the benchmark data. You're more generous in your design features. I don't think that's news to anybody in the room, but I'm just kind of putting A and V together so that the story holds. Then the rates, the employee contributions, I think we already made the recommendation, no increase to '22. Here they are for '21. If that was the will of this governing body, then they'd be flat for '22 as well, so there they are in that respect. Row, keep us going. Thank you. So the summary of why you might consider changes, so we started this journey a few years ago, and we provided a strategic document then. It was basically some of the plan designs on the previous two pages, but what's going right? Since we've been able to help with your reinsurance or stop-loss, we marketed that across a wide, that's not on the ID card, it's not in the open enrollment guide, so who you buy reinsurance from and how you buy it is something that doesn't impact employees at all, so it allows you some leverage. It's not a Blue Cross thing, it's not changing carriers, nobody has to change docs, it's a behind-the-scenes financing mechanism, so that's gone favorable for you. Your prescription drug terms have gotten remarkably more favorable, and then the muscular-skeletal program and the physical therapy things that have been done have been very helpful. So a lot of things going right, and I think that's why there hasn't been a budget increase for the last two cycles, but time to come back and look at that because of the three, three most recent months and kind of where you guys are in future forecasts. Healthcare trends, 7% to 8%. So a do-nothing strategy, which suggests the baseline increase in a $30, $33 million, $35 million spend is 7.5%. So that's basically like saying consumer price index, inflation, when I say healthcare trends running 7.5, the do-nothing strategy's going to cost the, every client, every plan sponsor, municipal, corporate, privately held, healthcare inflation, healthcare trends, 7.5%. So a do-nothing strategy, your costs are going to go up 7.5. So overall, just kind of making the point, now translating a previous page that was a graph chart, that you saw the differential between yourself and a normative, and now we're trying to quantify that 15 to 17%, that's about $4 or $5 million. So why? Why is Buncombe County spend 15% higher than normative data? You cover more dependence because the payroll deductions are more favorable. I don't think that's news to anybody in the room. You have a very low cost share, the plan designs are favorable, and the risk profile of the group is improving, but we're on that journey, and health doesn't change overnight, and people still need to be treated, and sometimes there's gaps in care that are identified that were untreated. So the correct treatment, and when the PT and the clinic and the things we're going to talk about today are really running, for a low turnover environment, you want to invest in those things, because you're helping people improve their health, and long-range, that will save money. So that's the summary of why we're suggesting some of the things. So here are the changes. '21, these are the deductibles and out-of-pockets that you saw on a previous slide, so 300 hours for standard plan, 400 for buy-up, and 650 for core. If you let your eyes go to the middle of the page, you would see the suggested changes. So in, in this example, for a single person or an individual, deductible goes from 300 to 525. That's an increase of $225. I think you guys get it, and so you can kind of see the buy-up, 400 goes to 600, core goes 650 to 750. And so a little bit less, it's not the same number incrementally, there's a little method to the madness, trying to keep those in line or in a way that is plausible for the three to still have a shelf space. So when you think about this, people, when they pick a product to enroll in, there's got to be a little bit of shelf space between the three offerings. So there's savings correlated with this, and you see the cost savings for deductibles about $331,000, out-of-pockets about 450, 454 to be specific. And then, so while we were together, thought it was good to tell you more than one year, maybe incrementally this is done, the year after that, so January the 1st of '23, you might consider some additional changes. Probably the biggest one would, would be you see standards no longer there, and, and the standard, if I could have made the chart work, I guess I would have put the HDHP stands for High Deductible Health Plan, pretty prevalent in America, pretty prevalent in municipal America. HSA stands for Health Savings Account. That's basically like an IRA for medical, that's what affectionately is referred to often, but we would introduce that plan as, as a third option, and standard would be sunset. If you're trying to consume it in the lineup, mentally, I would just have you kind of pick it up in your mind and stick it over there past core, okay? It would be less rich than core, not to be as rich as standard. You'll notice the footnote, if we did, if it was the will of the governing body and, and the leadership of the county to launch a high-deductible health plan and sunset standard, you could offer your employees HSA money. This might be very appealing to a certain portion of your employee base, because they'd have dollars that would be funded by the county to set aside for future costs. If they didn't need those dollars and they were super healthy, the law allows those funds to be used to pay for Medicare premiums at retirement. So HSAs are popular, I'm sure you've Googled them, I'm sure you have friends that have them, but that would be the year-three strategy if you wanted to go in that direction. The savings for the changes, 1-1-22, between deductible and out-of-pocket are 331 and 554.
I'm sorry, can I, can I pause you for a second? Go back?
100%, yeah.
I may have missed you, your explanation of benchmark and what that meant.
Yes, so this particular benchmark was more when high-deductible health plans are deployed. So that's when we were showing you the 1,000 and the 4,000. Two slides ago, we showed you benchmark USI and municipal America, and those were a little different than that 1,000, 4,000. Not remarkably, but slightly different. Is that helpful to you? You're welcome. So a little bit of a move now. So plan design effectuates change immediately. The things that we're going to talk about next take a little bit longer to, to create change, because it's all of us getting more healthy. Are we walking enough? Are we running enough? Are we exercising or eating right? So HRA's, Health Risk Assessment, and I think most people in the room know, because Buncombe County's been doing that for several years, but I need to get the flow and the order of events right, because I'm about to share something with you that will, first, we need to make sure we're all together on this. So health risk assessments are done annually. You ask your employees to do that. They're done in October. The, the results are provided to them sooner than January, but depending upon how they, how those results happen for an individual. So what's an HRA? Biometric screening, blood pressure, glucose, HDL, LDL, BMI, weight, so those are the criteria that are looked at in a health risk assessment for biometric screening. Depending upon how that's scored, you get your results in, in January, and you could either have the favorable premium or the regular premium depending on those results. And then there's an opportunity to see the clinic during a calendar year as an alternative standard. So that's all just kind of backdrop to, and should be kind of walking collective knowledge, but wanted to get that out there as we move into the next as we move into the next series of discussions. So how'd it go? October 20, here are your results for your HRAs. So if I was looking at Buncombe County and comparison county is somebody four years into the journey, okay? So where should I expect to be? Should you be there now? No. Should that be a goal? Yes. So the aggregation of your employees and adult spouses taking health risk assessment and looking at their results, we now put your employee base into three buckets, low risk, moderate risk, and high risk. And so let's just pause, low risk at 58. Wait, isn't that better than 63? No, it's not. We want low risk to be as high as possible. The larger percentage of the employees that are low risk, the better the disease burden in the group, in your case, in the county. So that's how you read this data. Fifty-five percent of your members improved. So a year ago, that nine percent was more like 13%, right? The high risk. So we had some migration. That's good. Clinic's working, muscular skeletal program's working, PT's working. However, and this happens, gravity's pulling on all of us. Our people, low and moderate risk, unfortunately, had some slide, and that's why these programs are important. That's why they're repetitive. That's why we try to keep it front of mind. That's why you have a wellness program and a chronic condition management program. Remember, we're trying to fight seven and a half percent trend. All hands on deck to just dial that down. Okay? So that's the results of your October 20 HRA.
Another question for you, sorry, to the previous slide. You had comparison county. Do you mean that literally is that one other county that's analogous?
I do literally mean that as one other, as a bogey on somebody that's further along in the journey. Yeah, if you were asking me to kind of characterize how's Buncombe and year two stack up, I'd say pretty much as expected. So let's translate, health risk assessment results year over year, got some high risk, some medium risk, and some low risk. Now let's translate that into claim cost and percent of members. So for the 58% who scored low risk, zero to one, their claim cost on a per capita basis is 6,300. So you see how there's a direct correlation between the higher the risk factor, the deeper the disease burden, the larger the claim spent per person. Pretty logical, but good to see it, right? So 1,116% members, 58% of your membership, doing pretty well. And they don't really need to come to the clinic. So we're not proposing a change there. Current is how often they need to come to the clinic. So wellness visit requirement is to show up to the clinic, let's talk, and maybe there's a reason why. You've got some risk factors, and what do we want to do about those? For those with two today, the calendar year 21 requirement is for them to come to the clinic once. We're just asking it to go to twice. For those with three or more risk factors, they see the clinic once. We're asking that to go to three. So yes, we are asking 32% of the people to do a little something different in 22 than they did in 21. We're asking them to go either one more time or two more times. Those touch points are critical in the change journey, okay? It's just an opportunity to talk, maybe understand what they're consuming, how they're consuming, or maybe not at all. Maybe there's a gap in care that needs to be closed. They don't have to go to the clinic. If they have an affinity to go to a personal physician, that's, they would just need to get a printed copy of that, bring it into the clinic, and that's who's record-keeping on whether we got the two done or the three done, okay? That's the recommendation and the suggestion. Now, we'll call out, there's 27% of the members, 697 adult members who did not complete, you know, it's a cohort. I got to have you in period one and period two to measure anything. You've got 697 on the sidelines, and some of that's due to new hire, but some of that's just due to people not wanting to do it. 27% is kind of high for that. I'd say you get about, in any given benchmark study, about 10, maybe 12% just not interested. I'll pay the higher premium, leave me alone. So I'm calling that out now because we have a recommendation in a moment on a potential remedy for that, okay? Is pace okay? Okay, I'll keep us going. Thank you, Row. So a lot of data here. So we've moved away from clinic now to incentives, okay? This is health improvement incentives. So this is how a plan sponsor like Buncombe County tries to encourage a consumer to engage, okay? So what you have, so we're not recommending any change for 22 to employee premiums. Already said that. I'm going to say it again because we're not recommending it for wellness either. No change for 22. We are suggesting a preferred plus rate for 23. What's a preferred plus rate? A preferred plus rate would be today, 58% of your people, if they take the 22 HRA, right? We're going to do that in October 21, and then they turn around in October 22 for 1123, take the HRA. I mean, no reason to assume it won't be a high percentage. It might not be 58, but they would already gain favor for the preferred plus rate, okay? So let's look at high risk and medium risk. We're asking those people, that's the 32%, we're asking them to improve one criteria. Glucose scores could get better, HDL score, HDL, LDL scores could get better, BMI could get better, just an improvement, not in every category, in one category, and they would get the preferred plus rate. If they didn't do either one of those two things, and we got into calendar year 23, and they were willing to work with the clinic and still try to make an improvement and actually achieve an improvement at that point in the calendar year, not the beginning, but let's just say they finally fixed something in their health profile in June of that year, then they would get the preferred premium reasonably following the June date for payroll administrative purposes. So there's always a way to get the preferred plus for someone who's willing to come along in the program, okay? That's what I'm trying to say. The regular does go up a little bit, and the preferred stays, is a little more favorable than the regular, and the preferred plus stays the same as the current discounted. So why tonight? Why are we telling you about the 23 journey? Because this has got to be communicated sometime in 21. The consumer will take action in 23, and then the implications of those actions will take place January 1, I said, excuse me, sometime in 22, and then the payroll deduction change would be in 23. I apologize, I made a mistake in the dates. Lot to keep up with. Okay, so, hey, Larry, why the increase in the regular rate, that last bullet point? Remember on page nine, I told you that we have 697 participants not engaged, which is around 27%. This would be a vehicle, so see how the regular rate goes from 53 bucks to 61 for those in the standard plan? It's conversationally $9, but that's not a month. So $100 a year. We're just trying to put a little more incentive to, do you mind coming off the sidelines and participating in the program? That's all we're trying to do is get them to engage with us in a health habit change and with your clinic, that the county's invested assets in that clinic and in the PT program, right? So y'all have deployed the resources to help people make improvements. We're just asking them to lean in and help themselves a little bit. Okay. So now we're going to segue again. This is just an update. Muscular skeletal program's going great. Claims are going to bounce. You had 3.6 million in 1 in 18, 4.5 million in 19, and now we're down to three. I would love to tell you, five months into your muscular skeletal program, you made, we made 1.5 million disappear. We did not. Things are going well, but I would say that you're moving average on muscular skeletal spends, probably closer to a high threes, low four number, and the favorability that you've got in the PT program's probably worth 50, $70,000 a month. That's basically what this is saying. Through March, you have 285 members. Just to help you make sense of it, the county's probably got about 3,800 enrolled members. Adult members are probably 3,200, and so to have 285 join the muscular skeletal program, look, as we all get older, knees and hips and shoulders, that's the way it works. And so engaging people before they need surgery is beneficial, and lots of times PT can prevent surgery if they get good PT and they stick with the physical therapy regiment. So we estimate the program's savings to be north of 300, and our original projection was three. That's some of the reason for the favorability. That was just an update for the good of the group. Keep going, Row. So condition care program, and I know we're really getting deep in the weeds, but stay with me. PPCN, that's the old Asheville project, so most folks have probably been around long enough to remember and know that. I think it's been good for the county, good for the city. I think it might have seen its life cycle. Clinical care programs need to be updated and evaluated. If it's about engaging people and saving money, I'd say this one's seen better days. There's low engagement right now, and there's not good evidence of savings. There's probably a better way home. So one of the recommendations is that you sunset that program. There's implications to sunsetting that program. You have 390-some people enrolled in wellness program with the county today that get partially subsidized drugs because they're enrolled in that program. That'll go away on January 1. So the recommendation is that you sunset this contract. I'll leave that to staff and leadership on when that exactly happens, but we would sunset the three plans that those 390 people are enrolled in on Janu, that's the time to do it in the Blue Cross cycle. You renew January 1. So that's when that would take place. So a little bit of a downside to those people, but it's not having the effectiveness that you want. Those dollars could be better spent by the county in a different way. So I'll talk about that now. There's a new approach, plan member advocate. So let me just put a couple of facts on the table. You had, so the county had 346 people identified for case management this past year. Case, so what could that be? That could be post-surgery, and I wasn't engaged. That could be I'm a diabetic, and the data says I'm non-compliant. I haven't had an A1C exam in a while. That could be a number of other things that aren't coming to me right this second. But you only had 21 of those 346 engaged, around 6%. Honestly, not completely unique. That's, people just don't return phone calls, and they don't like talking to their insurance company. You had 13 members at 192 inpatient stays complete a post-operative or a post-inpatient stay call. So neither one of those would be favorable statistics. I'm making a case for behaving a little different. We think you could get some lift, and we've had that number validated by Blue Cross, about a half million dollars if we could get case management up. Our recommendation, after going to market and talking to some other partners, is synergy would become your primary advocacy group and condition care and care navigation partner. That's a mouthful, but they would do a lot. You'd have an RN. CCM stands for Certified Case Manager. They're quasi-clinical, and they know about behavior change, a lot of behavior change. So I might have chronic ill, I might have Crohn's disease, and before we can ever treat the Crohn's disease, we've got to treat me emotionally and get me in a place where I want to make changes and I accept where that lifestyle change might be. Have to eat different, have to consume some pharmaceuticals that have a side effect. I don't like the side effect. I like to eat what I eat. I don't like side effects. So RN and Certified Case Manager are really important ingredients on the change journey. Think high school coach, whoever, piano teacher, whoever leaned in and really helped you make a behavior change and was shoulder to shoulder. That's what we're talking about here. It's just clinical this time. The cost for this program is going to run you about 191,000 bucks, and the ROI is going to be a net ROI of about 350. That needs ramp time, so that's a 12-month journey. But that's the recommendation to the group, and we're informing you of that one. Autoimmune, so everybody knows lupus. Autoimmune diseases, there's a broad spectrum of autoimmune. Three big ones, MS, rheumatoid arthritis, psoriasis, and Crohn's, inflammatory bowel disease. So why are we singling out autoimmune? If you know anybody with autoimmune and you have any inclination of their healthcare journey, it's a mess. It's self-guided. It's difficult. There are four or five different attending and treating physicians. Nobody's really quarterbacking care, and they go for care. It's complex. They're a complex patient. They're not easily identified and diagnosed. And what this program does is says, okay, you've got 151 of them. But by the way, we're getting better at diagnosing them, so they were probably always there. They just weren't diagnosed, I say we. The clinical community is getting better at diagnosing people with autoimmune disease. And so because of that, you already had that patient, that employee, that covered spouse, but they were bouncing around in the healthcare system with no diagnosis. And we're finally getting better at it as a country, as a clinical community. And you're spending around 2.6 million dollars today. 1.6 of that's on pharmaceuticals. And so I'm going to scare you a little bit and tell you that 32 people spent that 1.6 million. Yep, so stay with me. 151 people have it. 32 are taking drugs for it. You spent 2.6 million with 131 people, 151 people. But of that 2.6, 1.6 million was drugs, and only 32 people spent that money. Remember the beginning of the meeting, I said 1% of the people spent 5% of the money? This is part of that 1% right here. You've got 4,000 belly buttons covered, and we're talking about 151 of them, okay? So specialty medications average 50 grand. So this program is entirely designed to lean in to the people with an autoimmune, I wish we had this program for every disease there is. We don't right now. And this one's marginally beyond pilot phase. There are six clients doing it. Anyway, we think you might be interested, and it might be a wise investment to consider deploying this program for your folks who would like to participate. Not mandatory, not required. They're individually outreach too, and if they'd like to join the program, it's free to them as a consumer. Why would the county want to offer something free to a subset? Because you're spending 2.6 million dollars on 151 people and 32, 1.6. I think it's probably a good investment to lean in on them and see if they're being in the care navigation world, if they can be helped with their disease state, and this program's designed to do it. No guaranteed ROI on it. My sense, in my conversations with all my clients, is if you don't do this, you're going to continue to spend money on their pharmaceutical consumption, and they're going to move all around the healthcare journey because they're sick and they don't feel well, and they're not sure why. And they frankly just get bounced around in the healthcare system. So this is designed to kind of center that, ground it, put a net around it, and start to effectuate change. With some people who designed some pretty smart clinic, Dr. Hanaway designed the program through the Cleveland Clinic. If you know the Cleveland Clinic, that's like saying Mayo, right? It's legitimate. That's a lot. Thank you for letting me run through it. I'll summarize, go to the next one. So, you know, if it all boils down to savings, the plan design changes on page seven were worth a little less than $800,000. The complex care navigation is worth about 352. We tossed autoimmune in there, but I want to be very specific right now. There's no savings associated with autoimmune. So you could delay that program and just, you spend what you spend, kind of like you're doing right now. It doesn't make it a good or bad decision. It's just an alternative. But if you deploy it, you could effectuate change downstream, and hopefully some of those 32 and 151 join. But together, those two are estimated as saving a little over a million dollars in a calendar year on a generally, conversationally speaking budget of 35 million. So it takes 3% out. So I got to put quotes around savings, and I got to kind of now say, it's really future cost avoidance because I've been telling you, trends run at seven and a half. So that 35 million number is going up seven and a half percent a year. We just got to have all hands on deck to try to drive it down, and here's a million, that maybe takes out three points. So I am grateful for your time tonight. I'm sorry I tried to move at a decent pace and cover quite a lot of ground, but it's been a pleasure to be here. I'm happy to take questions or whatever's best.
All right. Thanks, Larry. That was a lot of information, and I think you did a great job covering it. Commissioners, are there any questions at this time? We're not voting on anything tonight, of course. We're just, this is to share information with the commission, and there's going to be a process to get more engagement with county employees, and then, so it's just starting the process. Any questions?
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here tonight and providing an overview of this. It's an important policy, and we appreciate the good work being done and ideas for the future.
Grateful for the chance to be on the team. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. All right. Very good. Okay, next up, we have a public hearing to consider an economic development agreement with East Fork Pottery, and Tim Love, our intergovernmental relations director, is here to present it.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Appreciate your time. This evening, we've got, as Chairman Newman said, an economic development presentation for East Fork Pottery. As part of that, we have a presentation that we'll walk through, per usual. But I also wanted to let you know that there's a few folks in the audience with us. We have Alex Matisse, one of the founders of East Fork, who will come and speak to you shortly. But additionally, we have April Brown with Economic Development Coalition, and Philip Cooper, representing the YMI. And I think collectively, we'll talk to you a little bit about the East Fork opportunity. In terms of the background and request, in June of 2021, East Fork Pottery announced that they would be expanding in Buncombe County, which is exciting news. For those that are unfamiliar with East Fork, they're a manufacturer and distributor of ceramic goods. Their current site ceramic goods. Their current site's in Asheville. There's three of them. They employ about 100 people, but they're looking to expand that number, and we'll talk about that in just a moment. Our request today from the board is twofold. There's two resolutions in your packet. One resolution relates to our typical economic development agreement, which we're asking for you to approve. And then a second resolution relates to the building reuse program, which is a new program for us that's offered by the Department of Commerce, Rural Division. And so that resolution would approve that second agreement. There are two modifications. You can see it in the notes on the slide, but we made a last-minute edit to the documents to include all three facilities that East Fork owns and operates here in Buncombe County. The original agreement only listed one, but that was a—that was a mistake on my part. So just wanted to call your attention to that. We've switched those documents in the packet, but that was the only change. Speaking of, so site locations. On the map, there's three locations I want to call your attention to. They're color-coded, just to make it easier to understand the differences. 15 West Walnut is a retail establishment. That's indicated in blue on your map. You can see it at the top. But there's also two manufacturing facilities, one on Short-McDowell, and then one on Caribou Road. And so the Caribou Road facility is right off of Sweeten Creek, and then the Short-McDowell site is right before you get into Biltmore Village. So we're talking about three sites. The reality is the majority of the improvements in equipment will occur at the manufacturing sites, but there is the possibility that some of the hiring that occurs could impact that retail site. So we wanted to include all three just to—just to say. The scope of the project, so this involves expanding the existing Asheville plant, and so there's three of which, as I've described to you already. This involves retaining the existing 100 jobs, as well as adding an additional 50 jobs. In the process, East Fork would invest about $2.38 million, which includes any improvements to the facilities, but also purchase of personal property—or business personal property, excuse me. Average wages here are 46.7 annually, which is $22.46 an hour, which, of course, exceeds the living wages that we see here in Buncombe County. An exciting item I'd like to discuss with you today is regarding the hiring from disadvantaged populations and how that's been structured into this agreement, and we'll talk about that in detail. But the quick notes on that, we're talking about folks that participate in the STEP program, which I know you're familiar with, but also folks that may be justice-involved. So something we'll talk about more. All in all, you can see in the green tagline, we feel this that we're bringing before you today really aligns to Buncombe 2025 on a number of levels. We're talking about higher average wages in our community. We're talking about increasing total employment, but we're also talking about equity, which we really achieve through that final bullet. But at this point, what I'd like to do is I'd like to ask Alex to join us here at the podium. Alex will walk us through the expansion and some of the values that East Fork has put forth. But come on up, Alex.
Thank you, Tim, for that introduction. It's great to be here. I'm going to take you through a quick history of East Fork. I founded it in 2010 in Madison County, and it was on an old tobacco farm. We used to fire our work in a large wood kiln. If anybody knows North Carolina pottery, it's a thing. In 2015, my wife and now our CEO, Connie Matisse, and our business partner, who's our CFO, John Viglen, bought a small gas kiln from the Netherlands. It was like going from a Conestoga wagon to a Tesla. And from that point, we've been off and running. We—yeah, that was in 2015. 2017, we moved into the Short-McDowell location, and in about a year, we were bursting at the seams. Three-year growth rate of 109%. 2020 revenue was 2X over 2019. We've got two stores, one here, one in Atlanta, and we've just crossed 100-employee threshold. We added 26 employees during 2020 during COVID, and we've already added about 15 this year, plus all the hiring that we're gearing up to do. Instead of surviving the last 12 months—well, this is actually from an old deck. Obviously, it's more than 12 months now—but we really thrived, in part because we make dinnerware, and our supply chain—we control our supply chain, but also because people were buying for their homes, and we don't rely on a lot of wholesale accounts or industry. So we're selling to an end consumer. All those orders are fulfilled out of the Caribou Road location. What else? Yeah, so we maintained all of our staff on payroll. We made no cuts. We did no furloughs. We paid them for two months of factory shutdown. We also recently increased our minimum wage for all entry-level positions to $20 an hour. Our target is $22.20, which is the MIT standard living wage in Asheville for a family of two parents working with two children. So that's our target that we'll be moving to over the next two years. We also raised $381,000 for local nonprofits in our community. So we really focus all of our philanthropic efforts in Asheville and Atlanta, because we also have a store in Atlanta. And we just got B Corp certified and carbon neutral certified. This expansion is exciting. While all ceramic factories in the U.S. are closing down, there's only a few left. We're importing some of the most—some of the best automated technology that is available to us. We haven't run away from automation, even though our start was working with our hands on a potter's wheel. That's how we can pay $20 an hour for somebody to come in with no resume and go through our hiring program. What else? The new facility will be fully operational and commissioned by January of 2022, and it'll give us a capacity of about a million pieces a year, which is a lot of pottery from where we started just a couple of years ago, about 1,000 pieces a year. A big thing that we do, and that working with Tim—he's been very excited to talk with us about—is we have worked really hard over the last few years to think deeply about our hiring practices. So we hire from populations that currently have barriers to entry. We hire formerly incarcerated. And then on, you know, just making a hire is the really—is the easy part, but having an organization that can support folks as they come in is really important. So in that hiring, we don't need resumes. In fact, people actually leave with a resume through our coaching process. So we have someone who is going to be here tonight to speak, but could not make it. Clarissa Harris leads all of those efforts for us. We work with a number of community partners, including Philip Cooper, who we've worked with for many years, who's kind enough to come and talk about that partnership. And then again, we do a lot of focus on inclusivity, not just diversity. So what is it like to actually work at East Fork as—a—you know, as a BIPOC person? As everybody knows, Asheville is—has the sort of reputation from the outside world of being a bastion of kind of liberal happiness and perfect—you know, everything's perfect, and group, and you just go around to the breweries. But when you start digging through that, you realize that there's a lot more here. So we are committed to Asheville. We're committed to being here, and thank you for giving me the chance to come up and speak, tell you a little bit about East Fork.
All right. Thanks, Alex. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Alex. So at this point, we'll transition a little bit from what Alex shared, and I think really important, you know, some of those accomplishments, you know, kind of glossed over almost, you know. Certified B Corp, moved to a $20 minimum wage in this past year, which is when there was a pandemic. I know we all recall, so just wanted to spend a moment on that. But back to sort of logistics and business. So one new program that is being introduced in this process is the Building Reuse Grant Program. And so the reason we've not talked about this before is because we've never been eligible for it before. One of the side effects of the pandemic was our tier status, which is assigned by the Department of Commerce, was lowered, which made us eligible for this program that we're typically not eligible for. But moving on, more about the Building Reuse Grant Program. So this is a program that's administered by the North Carolina Department of Commerce, and specifically the Rural Division. The purpose of this program is threefold, but the piece that we're targeting today is renovating, you know, existing facilities. So that's the purpose of the program, to renovate existing or vacant facilities. There's a few requirements from the state. First off, the state will not pay for more than 50% of any company's project, and in this case, you know, it's a $2.38 million project. The state is contributing up to 300K. The state incentive is jobs-driven, however. So on a per-job basis, the state will allocate funds for the number of jobs created. All jobs must be created and maintained within 18 months of the award. But there's also a key component here, which is the requirement of a local government match, but also a local government clawback. And so on the next slide, we'll talk a little bit more about what that means. So from a county perspective, the local match is a 5% match of whatever the state is putting forward. In our case, that translates to $15,000. Additionally, there's the requirement for a quote-unquote "clawback." And what this means is that any state grants—that 300K that East Fork is eligible for, anything that is distributed to East Fork—if they're not able to meet the commitments long-term, for instance, maintaining employees for 18 months, as an example, or creating the full number of employees, Buncombe County would be on the hook for that requirement. The way that we sort of mitigate this risk—I was going to say "get around it," but the way we mitigate it is we simply wait for East Fork to meet its commitments. So instead of paying upfront, we stick to what is our traditional practice, which is paying for performance. So waiting until the end to distribute those funds. In doing so, we eliminate the need for a clawback, because we know that we've been able to meet the goals that are required in the grant. So that's our approach here, and that's how we'll mitigate the risk. The way that we've structured this, there are two dates on the schedule, and you can see in the far right, the state grant amount. We're proposing distributing those funds in two chunks of 150K each, contingent upon East Fork meeting the targets that are identified in this table related to jobs and investments. We think in doing that, we mitigate the risk of any future clawback, but also allow the spirit of this grant to sort of support the East Fork expansion. If no questions on that, I'll jump into the economic development agreement. The way this kind of ties together, in order to be able to create the match, so that $15,000, the 5% match for this program, we needed a way to sort of make those funds available to East Fork. The way that we do that is through our traditional economic development process. And so that'll transition us into the economic development agreement. The incentive structure for this agreement is a total of $40,000 one-time incentives. That comes from two buckets. The first bucket is that building reuse match of 15K, and the second bucket is the 25K, which is associated with a hiring incentive. And so that 15K was required to achieve the building reuse grant from the state. It's still an economic development incentive, so we still need to have a public hearing for it. But in our conversations with East Fork, we realized there was an opportunity here to do more, and that more specifically was on hiring from disadvantaged populations. And so what we've done in this agreement is worked with East Fork, and I need to be clear, you know, East Fork has been doing this work for three years. You know, it's not like we showed up one day, and they were like, oh, this is great. Let's do it. There's a commitment from East Fork to sort of create a process on the front end, but also the supports throughout the process so that people can be successful that are employed at East Fork. And so we're encouraging that through this process. And so what we've done is set up approximately $25,000 that could be drawn down at the end of the agreement if East Fork is able to hire from certain disadvantaged populations that are identified in our economic development policy. The major examples of those are participants in our STEP program, and so these are folks that participate in our Food and Nutrition Program, FNS, who are also working with AB Tech to be re-skilled or retrained so that they can enter the workforce with a new set of skills. But additionally, our policy talks about nonviolent offenders. For our purposes, we'll think of that as those that are justice-involved. But if East Fork's able to demonstrate at the end of the agreement they've been able to hire, they will have the ability to draw down an additional $25,000. That is pay-for-performance, though, so if they are unable to do that, that $25,000 will never be dispersed. In terms of the term of this agreement, it's a four-year agreement. So there's two years that East Fork has to create the capital investment and the jobs, and then a two-year retention. This aligns pretty well to the state agreement as well for the building reuse. Our payout structure, as I've said, pay for performance, so we'll wait to see how East Fork does. If all goes well, we'll pay at the end. To see what the schedule looks like, this is, again, two confirmation dates. The first in April 2022, and then in 2023. You can see, if you scroll to the far right, no payouts until year two, and those payouts are broken out into two buckets. The match, which is the 15K, and then the hiring grant, which we just discussed, is the 25K. So in terms of the impact of this project, I think we've talked about a lot. I think there's a lot to say. There's the clear benefit of 50 new jobs in our community, in an industry that we don't get to talk about a lot—the arts industry—from a manufacturing perspective. So that's exciting. The increased value on—in tax revenue that will be achieved through that investment. There's no incentives that are paid out until year two, and we anticipate breaking even if—on all of this—by year five, assuming that all incentives are drawn down. As you know, even beyond that, there's additional impacts that we like to present, just so you're aware of them, but that we don't factor into our cash flows. And so those are our indirect and induced benefits, which you see in our table. And so this refers to, you know, business-to-business transactions, you know, as East Fork works with other commercial companies in our community, but also those induced benefits, which are the benefits of folks that have good-paying jobs spending money in our community, you know, buying homes, going to the grocery store, doing all of those things. Those are benefits we recognize exist, but they're never the ones that we hang our hat on when we bring you a cash flow. So with all that said, we've gone through a lot today. The request for board action today is the approval of the two resolutions. Again, one resolution relates to the economic development agreement, which is typically what you see from us. The second resolution relates to the Building Reuse Grant, and what we're asking here is for you to allow the county manager to sort of finalize the agreement with the state of North Carolina, because that agreement hasn't been prepared for us at this point, partially because they're waiting on approval from this board for that grant, so.
All right. Great. Thanks, Tim. And so do we need to hold a public hearing for both the resolutions—for consideration of both the resolutions, or is it just for the economic development?
Just for the economic development. That's right.
Right. Great. Well, let's go ahead and hold a public hearing. So I'm going to call the public hearing to order at 6:13 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the proposed economic development agreement? Yes. Feel free to come on up.
How y'all doing?
Hey, good. Thank you.
All right. I like microphones. So I just want to speak on behalf of East Fork, because they're about what they're talking.
Can you share your name?
My name is Philip Cooper, and I work at the YMI Cultural Center as the Economic and Workforce Development Director, where we're working on closing the opportunity gap. A lot of people talk about the achievement gap, but we all know that we have an opportunity gap here in Buncombe County. And so I've been working with East Fork for several years. The relationship started when I was working at the community college, and they were passionate about hiring people from the community. And so they started out hiring folks who were fresh out of prison. You know, I hadn't seen that being done, the way that they done it. I even heard something mentioned in here today that caught me off guard when I heard something about a nonviolent. But you also have violent folks who do time and change their life around and come home and need to take care of their families, and East Fork has hired all of them. I've sent folks to them for the past three years, and, you know, they don't leave. I've had them hire folks that come from Asheville High School, you know, because it didn't even stop with providing opportunities for justice-involved. Alex was on me one day like, hey, man— Alex was on me one day like, hey, man, can we give some opportunities to some of the ones who are coming from Asheville High? Because everybody's talking about the achievement gap. He was like, well, what can we do about the achievement gap? I was like, well, you could hire one of the ones that ain't going to a four-year college. And they've hired three. You know, they hired one last year, fresh out of Asheville High School. He didn't work out because he really wasn't job-ready, but, you know. The other one was washing dishes at a restaurant for two years. And I asked him, what did he think about working at a manufacturer? And he went down there, he's still working at East Fork. And he's making the most money he probably made in his life because that was his second job after a grocery store. And so I'm just here to say, I know that they're really about it, and I look forward to continuing to partner with them because they are serious about people and building people and investing in people. You know, doing the work that I do with folks getting out of prison, I see it happen all the time. I'm from here, from western North Carolina, I'm a native. And I see how a lot of my white friends, when they get out of prison, especially the white males, it's easy for them to get a job, especially in manufacturing. But the black males don't usually get those type of opportunities. And East Fork Pottery has been intentional about giving opportunities that nobody else gives. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for being here. All right. Yes, please, come up.
Good evening. Chairman Newman, members of the commission, and thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight and for your continued leadership on the commission in support of local economic development and expansion. I'm April Brown, Director of Industry Recruitment and Expansion for the Economic Development Coalition for Asheville-Buncombe County. And I just wanted to speak to, as you heard from Alex and Philip, that this company is doing things differently and our community is better for it. I've been a witness to these initial conversations that you've heard about, about equitable hiring. That started over three years ago when they expanded to Buncombe County from the quaint roots that Alex spoke about in Madison County as they were scaling up production. Alex and his founder team started building relationships with the community to improve and ultimately change how they hire and employ people to be more accessible and equitable for people with diverse backgrounds and lived experiences. And now, even during our current labor market, when businesses and employers are struggling to fill open positions, when you ask them if they're having a hard time filling positions, the answer is a profound no. That doesn't mean that it's easy for them. It's to the contrary, actually. They have dedicated staff, 100% focused on equitable hiring, building relationships in the community, building a partnership model that calls into question every layer of the system. By putting in such intentional and thoughtful effort in the front end, listening to and partnering with community members and leaders and incorporating that feedback into equitable hiring practices and policies, candidates from diverse backgrounds are attracted and interested in working for them. They are a model employer for Buncombe County and beyond. We are grateful for East Fork's growth and investment in this community. With your support tonight, Alex and his team are building upon this foundation and charting their course for the next generation of success, expansion, and job creation here in Buncombe County. This is the kind of employer that will help the next generation to stay and build their careers and their lives in their homes in Buncombe County. So on behalf of our EDC staff and board, the Board of the Asheville Chamber, I thank you for your leadership and support of East Fork Pottery tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Anyone else? All right, we're going to close the public hearing at 6:19 PM. Is there any additional information we need before we take up the resolutions? All right. Commissioners, we need to consider two different resolutions. The first resolution is the resolution authorizing Buncombe County to pay the economic development incentives and to authorize the execution of the economic development agreement. And then the second one, which we'll vote on separately, would be a resolution authorizing Buncombe County to cooperate with East Fork Pottery LLC and to participate in the North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Grant Program as has been described.
Brownie, I move that we authorize Buncombe County to pay economic development incentives and to sign the economic development agreement, including modification to facility location for East Fork. And I'd like to say, in the five years now I've been on the commission, this is one of the best economic incentive programs that I've seen us come before us for the simple reason that they are doing what we need in Buncombe County to continue the quality of life. And also, one of the hot buttons for me is that this will help us start to get rid of systemic races. Because that's where it starts, with employment. And because, you know, education and employment are the keys to it all. But that's why I move.
A second.
There's a motion and second to approve the resolution on the economic development incentives and the execution of the economic development agreement. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion regarding the second resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution regarding the building reuse grant.
Second.
All right, there is a motion and second, further discussion? I just want to say, it's such an exciting project. This is a real deal. Thank you guys so much for what you're doing. It's just so exciting to have this located in our community. It's just an example of how businesses can make a really powerful and positive impact in the world. So thank you so much for what you and your team are working on. We really support it 100%. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks, Tim. Appreciate it. Thank you, Alex. All right. Next up is Ms. Pinder, are there any items under the county manager's report? Very good. Next item under old business is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Voting Delegate. I think we discussed this at our last meeting. There's a need for the commission to appoint a member of our commission to represent us at the annual conference, annual meeting. And Commissioner Wells has expressed interest in doing that. So, and I don't think anyone else has raised their hand. So unless there's anybody else who wants to fight for it right now, then I'd like to nominate Commissioner Wells to be our voting delegate at the annual meeting.
Second.
All right. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for taking the trip. It's a long haul, we're a big state, but we really appreciate you being there and representing Buncombe County at that important meeting. All right. We come to new business. Ms. Pinder, is there any preference on where we place the Asheville High School classroom item? Want to deal with that now, or does it matter? Okay, let's go ahead and take care of that. And, thank you, Jennifer. And I'm happy to share a couple of comments, if you'd like for me to, about why the difference between the consent agenda and what we're doing. So just let me know.
Okay, great. How about I give it a try and then you ad lib if we need to?
Thank you.
So as Chairman Newman mentioned earlier, we had a budget amendment request for today's meeting on the consent agenda pending approval of the School Capital Fund Commission. We have revised the budget amendment to reflect the approval as outlined by the School Capital Fund Commission and in alignment with their established charter and rules. The amendment is as follows. The Asheville High Classroom Project is currently budgeted as three phases. So you'll see it reflected with the design and assessment with a budget, geotech inspections and other as a budget, and the construction phase as a budget. After the bids were received, the construction phase is estimated to be $598,508 more than originally estimated, obviously due to the associated rising construction costs. There is remaining available budget from the design and assessment and geotech and inspections and other phases totaling $448,508. The School Capital Fund Commission agreed that the remaining available budget from design and assessment and the geotech and inspection/other can be moved to the construction phase. An additional $150,000 is needed to fully fund the expenditure increase, and the School Capital Fund Commission recommended a new additional appropriation of $150,000. So the change, you've heard us discuss previously that when we bring the Fund 326 budget amendments for closures of projects that previously, so projects that had savings, that those savings basically fall through and would be made back available for conversation with the School Capital Fund Commission to redistribute. So the verbiage that was outlined in the consent agenda didn't exactly reflect that verbiage, and we wanted to be consistent. So that is the reason for presenting you with this revised or updated information. And so with that, we would just request that the budget amendment be approved for the School Capital Commission Fund as outlined.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. And as was mentioned, the School Capital Fund Commission reviewed this at our meeting this week and is unanimously supporting this recommendation. Are there any questions?
Is this the building that was torn, replacing the building that was torn down where the ROTC was near the gym?
Yes, that's right. That's right. And the only other detail I would add is that although the budget did come, the bids did come in over budget. I think the county's staff and the others who are involved in the project actually felt very positive about the bids that came in and the current context that we are in right now with so many construction costs really being challenging. There was a lot of concern that the bids would be significantly greater than were earlier budgeted. So they actually think we have a very solid bid on this project, and it's a good project to move forward on at this time. All right, if there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
All right. The next item under new business is a resolution delegating authority to the county manager to lease county property for terms of less than one year. Michael Frue, the county attorney, will explain the item.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. This is simply a request for the board to delegate to the county manager the authority to enter into leases for terms of one year or less. Generally, the general statutes require that any lease of more than one year come before the board and a formal resolution be passed stating that the property isn't needed for county business or offices at this time and would like to enter into a lease of the property. And there'd be 30-day required notice in advance stating the terms, the general use, and that, again, that it was surplus property. So this would really be used for circumstances like the very small office that the county leases to Pisgah Legal Services one year at a time over in the courthouse for mortgage-related meetings or leasehold interest problems. And it's for our small recurring program partners for small space leases generally or for community club properties. So we just ask the board's approval to delegate that authority to the county manager.
Are there any questions, Commissioners? Or is there a motion?
So move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is consideration of a resolution recognizing the Asheville Area Arts Council as the designated arts agency for Buncombe County. And Katie Cornell, the executive director of the Arts Council, is here. So you talk to us about it.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tim was right, you are hearing a lot more from the arts tonight than usual. Very, very excited about the East Fork project. So as Brownie said, we are coming before you with a resolution to name us the designated arts agency for Buncombe County. This is a bit of an oversight, which we're hoping to correct, and I'll explain more about that in a minute. But we've been the only arts council in Buncombe County since 1979. So it's not like there's a lot of competition. So local arts agencies, the reason that we're coming for you tonight is because we have an opportunity to apply for NEA funding, National Endowment for the Arts, additional American Rescue Plan funding for our county to redistribute to local arts agencies. Very exciting. But as you see, the application deadline is the 22nd of this month. So we kind of need to move quickly on this. So Americans for the Arts defines local arts agencies' role as to promote, support, and develop the arts in our communities. The National Endowment for the Arts sees the arts councils as a critical partner in dispersing arts funding because we know the arts organizations within our communities. Asheville Area Arts Council is the second-oldest arts council in the state of North Carolina and one of the first in the United States. We formed as a subcommittee of the Junior League in 1953 and became an official nonprofit in 1979. Asheville Area Arts Council has been recognized since 1979 as the designated arts agency for Buncombe County at the state level. And at that time, we would have had to get some approval from the county. We just can't find the official documentation. So that's why we're asking you tonight to approve this resolution. Our mission is to keep the arts at the heart of our community, and we do this through advocacy, public art, and services for creatives, which is where our grant programs fall. I want to give you a brief overview, it's not advanced, okay, of the arts pre-COVID. We just put out a comprehensive report looking at creative jobs in Buncombe County pre-pandemic in May. And so you'll see the creative industry jobs in Buncombe County grew 24% during that period, over 14,000 jobs. And in 2019, creative industry sales had reached $1.6 billion, representing 44% growth. So early next year, we're going to follow this up with a post-pandemic report for you. Now, before the pandemic, we had also emerged, the performing arts had emerged as a high-performance cluster for Asheville Metro as well. Now we'll look post-pandemic, or the effects of the pandemic. According to Americans for the Arts, 66% of arts businesses in North Carolina were severely impacted by the pandemic, and 65% of creative workers in North Carolina experienced unemployment. We also know that arts nonprofits, jobs in arts nonprofits, will take the longest to recover, 2.5 years, which is longer than any other nonprofit sector. This is from the chamber from the second quarter of 2020. And you'll see, you've probably seen this before, that the arts were some of the top negatively impacted industries, particularly independent artists and the performing arts, as well as museums. So the arts entertainment and recreation sector was the top creative sector, growing 53% during that period of our study. This was double the growth of the construction industry during that same period of time. But fast forward, you'll see that we also experienced the greatest percentage of employment loss in Buncombe County from 2019 to 2020. Overall, 34% decline in 1,300 jobs. This was higher than the state average by 9%. So PPP loans, arts entertainment and recreation organizations got 410 PPP loans. And you've probably heard of the shuttered venue operators grant, which some of our performance venues have received. This is also called Save Our Stages. So 20 organizations have received that so far. But what you'll see is there are substantially more organizations that need additional relief aid that had received PPP loans than are, have either already received an SVOG grant or are eligible to apply for it. Looking at local arts aid received, if you look at One Buncombe, 26 arts businesses and 16 arts professionals received about 12% of that funding. The Buncombe County Tourism Jobs Recovery Fund, 57 arts and entertainment businesses received funding there. That's about 14.5%. And the state of North Carolina used a portion of their CARES funding last year. $9.4 million went to the North Carolina Arts Council and was distributed to the counties on a per-capita basis. The Asheville Area Arts Council received about $300,000, which we re-granted to 36 arts organizations on behalf of the county. These are some of the needs and concerns that are still affecting the arts sector right now. I'm not going to get into this for the sake of time, but I thought you should see. I'm not going to get into this for the sake of time, but I thought you should see them. So what's before you tonight is the requested resolution to designate Asheville Area Arts Council as the designated arts agency for Buncombe County. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Thank you very much for that presentation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much for that presentation. We really appreciate all the great work. It's a tough time. All right. Next item is a resolution selecting a professional consulting firm to assist in the development and production of a comprehensive plan for Buncombe County. Nate Pennington and Gillian Phillips from our planning offices are here to present this item.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, members of the public. It's with great joy that we're here tonight. It's been a long time going, but we're here tonight to bring to you both a resolution, draft contract. We have a very short presentation, and then the ask is to have you vote on the resolution to have the county manager and the planning department enter into contract with Clarion and Associates, who would be the chosen consultant, and we'll kind of go through the process of how we arrived at this point tonight. Gillian will get us started.
So just to review for you what the consultant's role is going to be in this process, the consultant will guide the comprehensive planning process and provide services and support to help with the creation of the plan. So examples of tasks the consultants would complete would be helping our Cape Department design and carry out the public engagement process, compilation and analysis of data, including such things as land use scenario modeling and demographic analysis. They would provide their expertise and help develop the goals and policies and actions that eventually end up in the comprehensive plan, and they would draft the plan and present it to the planning board and the Board of Commissioners for review and adoption. So the process that staff went through to choose Clarion is, in April of this year, the county issued an RFP, and we received five proposals. We formed a selection committee. It included our planning board chairwoman, Nancy Waldrop, and staff from Cape, the planning department, the county manager's office, the agricultural and land resources department, the library director, and again, Nancy, our planning board chair. Each proposal was scored based on the requirements laid forth in the RFP. They included such things as quality of the work examples provided, making sure that the proposals addressed the core components laid out in the RFP, and providing a focus on equity throughout the proposals. The top two scored proposals were then interviewed by the committee, and Clarion was selected by the committee as the best proposal submitted. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Nate, and he's going to talk more about our timeline and the consultant we chose, Clarion.
Thank you. So from this point forward, Gillian went how we got to this point now. So tonight, we're here before you with the contract itself in its draft form. Once you take action tonight, well then, of course, you've got the job of selecting the steering committee that will work directly with staff, the consultant, planning board, and ultimately you as Commissioners, and serve as a conduit. The goal is to have them seated in August. And with that being said, we wanted to make sure that based on the fact that we have so many unique challenges and issues that face our community, we certainly do not have a popularity problem, and with that comes the need for special planning. Clarion brought with them a number of subcontractors with a local presence, so those that understand some of the unique challenges that face us. And with that being said, they scored the highest through our process. They have a proven track record across both the state of North Carolina and across the United States. I think you will be pleased with this choice. With that being said, you also have in your packet a budget amendment, which Jennifer can walk us through as well. There is both the, we've been in contract negotiations with Clarion. There is the set budget. There's also broken out some optional services, and the reason that we did it that way is we felt it was important, given some of the passionate conversations we're going to have moving forward, that there be the opportunity to have some extra ad hoc, if we need additional public hearings, or if we need more public engagement, that we also price those in so that you can see them. And with that being said, that concludes our presentation.
Great. Thank you, Gillian. Thank you, Nate. Commissioners, any questions?
I've got three or four questions and a comment. The last slide, you mentioned the subcontractors, and there's logos up there. Can you opine a little more on what you meant by they're bringing them along and what their
Oh, sorry, Max.
Their role and responsibility would be?
Sure. And the way that's broken up is in the RFP itself, but I can just run through them. Traffic planning and design, these are the Christie's. Christie Stout, Christie Carter, they're located just on Charlotte Street. They'll be looking at things like public transportation. Obviously, traffic comes up in just about every public hearing that we hear about. We have a very limited infrastructure. Niemack, Fernleaf, interesting fun fact about them is years ago, they helped us with steep slope, protected ridge, understanding how those ordinances got into place. They also developed the steep slope calculator. They've looked at things like landslide potentials. These are environmental experts with this group. Equinox, this should sound familiar to you. Equinox is working with us on our ferry road project. They bring with them a local presence. I've worked with David Tuck, who's the senior president of that company for years on various projects. They have a great understanding of that all-important thing called slope and some of our flooding issues and other environmental constraints. Our RC Associates is a subcontractor that specializes in tourism issues. They've worked at a number of other gateway communities across the United States, including places like Jackson Hole, communities in Colorado, Florida Keys, communities that really struggle with finding that balance between the residents and tourists. And ESP, ESP, I've worked with ESP for years as a floodplain manager. They are very good. They just helped us with our hazard mitigation plan, actually. And Nathan Slaughter, also, I see him at flood conferences, and they work with the state on flood mapping.
And their fees are, I can assume, included in that 406,000?
This is all your core group, and it is all working with that budget. There's no standalone side budgets for each of these subcontractors.
And how much of that budget, I guess I'm looking at, I have a lot of thoughts about this slide with the four phases. How much of that budget is associated with the scope of the work versus the time, the quantity of months?
I'm going to let Gillian step in here.
So it's both associated with scope and time. I can give you a breakdown. They gave us a breakdown per phase. Do you want to break down per phase what the costs associated would be?
Just give me one example.
So Phase 1, the launch is $38,000. Just to give you an example, what gets expensive when you're talking about comprehensive planning and planning consultants is the public engagement. We put a heavy focus in on that in the RFP. So Phase 2, establish the visions and goals, is about $90,000, and then Phase 3, develop policies and strategies, is about $158,000. And those would be our two phases that were really heavy in public engagement.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, I ask all that to say, like, looking at that Phase 3, it really feels like that's something that needs to take however long it takes, but...
So we did add, one of our options, the optional services that we are requesting they add, is additional public input workshops, and we did request that the principals in those firms be involved in those public input workshops. So we've budgeted in three additional public input sessions if we need them.
Okay. I'll just say one last comment, and that's that when you kind of add up these four phases on the high end of those quantity of months, we're talking about, you know, over, we're talking about two and a half years. I think that's just dramatically too long in my mind, in my opinion. So I guess I'd just love to say out loud, I'd love to see the shorter end for those Phase 1 and Phase 2 in terms of...
Shorter timeline for the project in general?
Yeah, to try to speed through those first two phases as much as possible. I know this isn't the time and place to kind of hash that out, but that's my reaction.
I would say we built in a lot of time to the proposed timeline, and so did Clarion, but both Clarion and some of the feedback we got from the other, the other firm that we interviewed, they all thought that was a very reasonable timeline, so.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion? First, well, we've got two items. First is the resolution, and then secondly, a budget amendment. Is there a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and I'm sorry, just for clarification, this is to give the county manager direction to enter into the agreement with professional services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion regarding the associated budget amendments?
I'll make a motion to approve the associated budget amendments.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, thank you very much. We're excited about seeing this go. The next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement between the city of Asheville, between Buncombe County and the city of Asheville to establish a homeowner grant program, and Philip Harden from our Health and Human Services Office will explain this item.
Back to talk about the homeowner grant program again. Was here June 15th and presented an option about this program. We requested public input after that meeting. Commissioners asked to come back with a possible another option around the homeowners grant program and for you to review, and we're here to talk about that today. So, public input was requested. I think there was 25 comments or so in that neighborhood as far as public input goes, and as you can see on this slide, not necessarily going to go through these, but it varied in a lot of different ways, the public input we got about a homeowners grant program. So we'll go next to Option 1, and this is the option that I presented at the June 15th briefing, with the grant amount up to $1,000. It was an annual grant amount, would only cover the tax bill increase, Buncombe County residents only, primary length of residence is a year at 80% of AMI. And then we require income documentation unless they were receiving means-tested programs through HHS, where we already had their income verified. And then no duplication of benefits with existing exemption programs, those four exemption programs exist already. So are there questions about Option 1? Not, we'll go on to Option 2. And this is the requested and recommended option that we bring for you today. Grant amount up to $250, still an annual grant amount. Here's where it differs a little bit, too. Tax bill or other homeowner costs, and that could be things such as mortgage or homeowner's insurance, still have to be in Buncombe County. The length of primary residence has moved to five years. Still using 80% of the average medium income for an income limit. And then we will still use means-tested programs to determine eligibility for receiving them from us, and once again, no duplication of benefits. And then the next steps, the budget has already been adopted with the $300,000 included. I'm here this evening to discuss those options again. We have a deadline of July the 23rd. We want something to go out in the tax bills that go out in mid-August. We have a deadline of the 23rd to get that flyer done so that it can be mailed. Our hope is to have applications available August the 1st. I can't guarantee that we would have an online application at that point, but we certainly would have paper applications by that date. It's kind of dependent upon County IT working with us to get that online application up and running. We'll work with our communication and public engagement about outreach for the program. The deadline for applications would be November the 15th, and our intention would be to come back to the board on December the 7th and give a status update of the program at that point. We would have received all the applications at that point. Questions?
Do we have a data point about the average property tax increase that Buncombe County residents will see?
There is. It kind of depends on who you include, if you exclude the exemption pieces of it, so it probably varies somewhere in the neighborhood. I've seen the figure of 199, and I've also seen the figure of like 297 or so, somewhere in between that probably $200 and $300 range for county-only increase.
Great, thank you, and thanks for the work that's gone into this.
Other questions, comments, or a motion?
Well, as we kick off the discussion, I'd like to, and I guess I'll package this in a motion, I might need some assistance with this, just to make sure I do it right. But I understand the resolution refers to the interlocal agreement, so I think the motion, or the amendment I'd like to actually make is to the interlocal agreement, that we raise that amount to $300. The rationale behind that is that if we know the average is somewhere between 200 and 300, we know there's a cluster of folks who would fall between $251 and $300, and this provides the ability to offer a little bit of additional assistance to those folks while still staying within, I think, the overall spirit of setting the amount at this level. So I think I'd like to make a motion that we pass the resolution to enter into the interlocal agreement with that amended figure within the interlocal agreement.
Of $300. Up to $300. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, well, I just want to say I'm glad we're doing this. I think this is a new idea for our community. I think we're going to learn a lot from doing it, and I'm glad we're going to thoroughly evaluate it, you know, what works well, what doesn't work well. Some other places have tried to do some things to provide some financial relief for folks who are in parts of the state that have seen cost of living go up for a variety of reasons in significant ways, and they haven't worked out that well, at least in some of the different efforts didn't work out that well, didn't have as much participation perhaps as they would have desired, things like that. So I think I'm glad we're doing the inserts and things like that, so that the property owners in the county will be notified about this and will help get the word out. So anyway, I'm glad we're doing this, and I think we'll learn a lot. So anyway, I'm glad we're doing this, and I think we'll learn a lot from it, and we can make adjustments based on what we see working well, and if some things aren't working as well, we can learn from that, too.
Do we have any idea how many people were estimated would be eligible for this? Because if it's between 200 and $300, I like the 250 number, I know we've already got a motion 300, we could be eliminating some people that this could be very important for them to get through. So would you be willing to pull that back until we've got more information on that?
My preference would be that we create that ability to go up to 300, and then at the status update, we can make a more informed decision based on what we're seeing in terms of how many people are actually applying to the program. And so that would be my preference, to keep the motion as, or keep the amended, the motion as stands with the amendment to go up to 300.
Yeah, I think that's an important point, up to 300. So if the increase was 200, then that's what the grant amount would be.
Robert, I share your concern. I mean, the trade-off is that the higher the number, the fewer people it can potentially support. We don't know, we haven't done this before, so I think we don't really know how many folks are going to seek, go through the process, which we're going to try to make real user-friendly, and, you know, the demand could be very large. So it may be that if we do either 250 or 300, that we don't reach everyone who might be eligible, but it's the first time we've done it. So I just, you know, I think we will learn a lot from it. I mean, it might be that we realize, hey, if you want to continue this in the future, we would have to invest more. I'm comfortable with the motion, but I appreciate the concern. There is the potential that it won't reach everyone if we go with a higher number.
Right, so do I understand it's up to 300?
Yeah.
That would be correct. The other piece I didn't say that I think's important, tried to mimic this program a little bit on existing programs that we have, and probably of all the programs we administer at HHS, this program probably mirrors our county general assistance program the most, and our income limit for that program is 300 also.
Further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Philip. Appreciate everyone who's been working on the development of this initiative.
Yeah.
Okay, we now come to board appointments. And first up is the Early Childhood Education and Development Fund Committee. I know folks from that group have been working on reviewing these. Would someone like to maybe give us a report?
Yeah, we had the opportunity to conduct interviews today, and just want to take a moment to say thank you to everyone who applied. It was a very compelling and exciting candidate pool. I would like to make a motion to appoint two folks to the committee, and those two people are Mark Taft and Linda McDaniel. This would be appointing Linda McDaniel in the at-large role and Mark Taft in the parent role, or slot, rather.
Second motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Thanks for your work on this. Appreciate everyone serving on this important committee. Next up is the Economic Development Coalition. There are three appointments that need to be made, and there are recommendations from the coalition regarding those three positions.
I'd like to move that we appoint Allison Blake, Andy Nardoo, and Robbie Russell.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Under Mountain Area Workforce Development Advisory, we've got one appointment. I recommend we appoint Eric Watts. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And under the Mountain Community Capital Fund Operating Committee, there's one appointment, and I'll make a motion to appoint Maui Vang.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've got a couple of announcements. On July 15th at 9:00 a.m., the county commissioners will have a special meeting to interview applicants for the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. And on July 20th at 9:00 a.m., the county commissioners will hold another special meeting to review additional applicants for the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On August 3rd at 3:00 p.m., the county commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. And on August 3rd at 5:00 p.m., the county commissioners will hold the next regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. We do have a need for what's expected to be a very brief closed session. Mr. Free, would you explain what the purpose is?
Yes, this is going to a closed session pursuant to 143, 318, 11A3 to discuss an attorney-client matter. This is involving, and I'll get to the clerk to cite, the Purdue Pharma opioid-related bankruptcy case as a Chapter 11, case number 19-23649, out of the Southern District of New York, and I just need some direction from the board.
All right, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve going into closed session for that purpose? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We do not anticipate the commission will take any action following the consideration of the closed session. We will simply adjourn. We're in closed session.